Good evening and welcome. I am calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for Burnsville this Monday, January 24th at 6:30 PM. As always, tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and virtually by using Zoom as chair. I will be leading the Planning Commission meeting and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or online via Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting, then rejoin. This usually fixes the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at the Burnsville website. That's burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email or mail your comments to city staff at City Hall. You may also participate in tonight's meeting online by going to zoom.us/join and typing in the meeting ID 923-7264-9368. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also join the meeting by calling us at 651-372-8299. Again, using that meeting ID 923-7264-9368. For each public hearing, I will open up a time and the callers may speak to the item and I'll give more instructions at that time. Your call may be muted until then, so please note the slight delay due to differences in technologies. Keep your computer on mute and if speaking by phone, also mute since there may be delay. And all that and more is on the website again, city website, burnsvillemn.gov, public meeting calendar. With that, let's move to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Commissioners? Any changes to...
No changes from staff.
No changes either. With that, I would take a motion to... with tonight's agenda. Commissioner Awad.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
We don't have Commissioner Anderson to second everything today. So he's got to step up. Commissioner Bradock, do you have something to say?
I second the motion.
All right. Motion was made by Commissioner Awad, seconded by Commissioner Bradock. All in favor of accepting the agenda as listed, please notify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We enter packets. You should have had minutes from the previous meeting. Any changes? Commissioners? Any changes to staff?
No changes.
No changes. With that, I would take a motion, take those minutes that were listed in your packet. Commissioner Bradock.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Bradock is a second. Commissioner Timmerman.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Timmerman. All in favor of accepting those minutes from last meeting in our packet, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Hearing none, it passes again. That brings us number three on the agenda. It's a public hearing for application of Southcross Commons LLC for rezoning from I3 Office and Industrial Park to I3 PUD Office and Industrial Park Plan Development Unit. Concept and development stage planned unit development to allow medical services or clinic use within the existing building and preliminary and final plat of Southcross Commons located at 3,000 County Road 42 West. Here to present is Sarah Madden, one of our city planners. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So the site we'll be talking about this evening is located within the I3 Office and Industrial Park District. It's an existing office building built in about 2,000 over just north of County Road 42 and the intersection with Southcross. So as mentioned, the site itself currently is zoned I3, which is different from some of our other industrial districts in that it's a primarily office or geared towards office type uses. You may remember recently that we've had some discussions about medical uses in the industrial district, so I have set aside a slide later to kind of talk about some of the why that has maybe come up a few times. But for this particular application, so the applicant has been reached out to by a number of medical type uses and has been communicating with staff about how to move forward with an application for this building. Medical use in the I3 district is a conditional use and based on discussions with the applicant, they opted to apply for a new planned unit development in order to accommodate that use and as part of that, the property is being platted and then there are some deviations for the site based on the existing conditions of the building and the new property lines that are associated with that plat based on some dedicated right-of-way that was formerly roadway easement. So shown here are existing floor plans, existing and proposed, the first and second floor of the building where there are a couple of spaces that are being dedicated for these new medical type uses. The applicants indicated that this would be in total, from what they are currently planning to lease approximately 9,000 square feet of medical type uses. So this would be about 31% of the building. There is a condition that staff has included and that we've communicated to the applicant about, that the maximum be 50% medical within the building and this is due to some constraints with parking demand on the property as the ordinance requires more parking per square foot of medical office space than they do for a traditional office space. So there would be opportunity for the applicant to add more medical uses than what's currently proposed in the future and then that's something that we would evaluate at building permit, how the parking could be accommodated with what's currently existing for the parking area. So included as deviations within the new planned unit development would be the medical service or clinic use. And then there are four deviations related to setbacks. So these are existing conditions and I'll point them out on a site plan after this. So there is one that is a reduction in the front yard setback for the parking area that is fronting on Southcross Drive, so that would be to the east. And then a reduction in the rear yard building setback for the drive-through canopy which is existing on the building as that space used to be occupied by a bank type use. Another reduction in the front yard for an existing trash enclosure and in the rear yard for the same trash enclosure that is on the north portion of the property, which I'll point out. Benefits of the planned unit development does provide an opportunity to bring new business to Burnsville and it's compatible with the existing building and the underlying zoning district. Building is an office building. It looks like that in style and it's designed like that inside and out when you look at the site. So shown here is the existing conditions survey of the property. So the property is kind of unique in shape in that much of the property was platted and subdivided around it as the roadways were put in and this is part of what was left and then developed in 2000 with a conditional use permit for building height but was not platted at that time. So the property, the existing trash enclosure is located here, so north would be to the left of your screens. The existing drive-through canopy for the, what used to be a bank user is just south of the, or sorry, west of the building, but on the bottom here. And then the parking area, which is within that parking setback existing, is located here to the east of the building on Southcross Drive. So the property does extend to the north up towards that intersection with its Burnsville Parkway, Southcross and Judicial, kind of an interesting intersection there with the roads change. And then shown here is the final plat that's been repaired of the property. So there were areas in which the right-of-way was more formalized as part of the plat in this dedication. So to continue on to the medical use in I district, so in 2014, the city code was amended and separated out in medical service and clinic to differentiate from office. And in this particular zoning district, I3 medical became a conditional use, separated from an office use. So there is a condition permitting maximum 50% of the building as a medical type use and there's some discussion in your report about the parking demand on the property currently with what is proposed with that 31% medical. The parking demand would be 121 spaces and there are 125 spaces currently onsite. And so future increases to that can be evaluated at a time of building permit application and staff does have tools within the planned unit development process as well as in our existing parking ordinance that allows some flexibility with parking requirements. So we have received an increase in inquiries related to medical service uses and industrial zones, so we are considering to propose changes to the city code update to allow medical services as a permitted use up to maximum percentages of floor plans of buildings. So just to know that we are aware that we've seen more requests for this recently and that we're kind of taking that into account as we review the city code. Overall, staff is recommending approval of the application for the, it would be the rezoning, the establishment of a planned unit development and the preliminary and final plat. Some of the standardized conditions related here, the use of the previously approved CEP is going to remain in full force and effect. That is related to the CEP for building height from 2000. Use is listed in the underlying zoning district of I3 that they would remain permitted. There is the condition related to medical service uses, maximum 50%. An additional condition that a parking plan is provided with building permit in the future change of use beyond that. And then that a city engineering memo comments from December be addressed prior to building permit application. So with that, this is a public hearing this evening. I can stand for questions and if there are questions of the applicant, there are representatives available as well.
Great, thanks, Ms. Madden. Any questions for the city staff? Commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Madden, you explained that this could have been handled through conditional use permitting. Why the planned unit development rather than that?
So the applicant chose to move forward with the planned unit development rather than the conditional use permit process. Part of that was because they wanted the flexibility for a number of medical tenants rather than just one medical tenant in one space with a conditional use permit. By establishing a planned unit development zoning, they felt that they could be more flexible with the location of their tenants within the building and how many percentage-wise could be in the building.
And then with the plating, is there typically a park dedication fee? Is that not falling in line with this particular request?
I'll maybe send that over to engineering. In the engineering section of our report, they've stated that there is none due at this time because there is not any construction or intensification of land use on the property so that fee has not been calculated for the, any expansion or building.
Yep, that's exactly right. Okay. No park dedication with this one.
So is it... Would we never be seeking park dedication on this property then? Because my understanding was that was something we usually sought at the time of plating.
So city, I don't know if the city code would, says that it is associated, covers costs associated with an increase in burden or use of the property, so we don't see that there's an increase in burden or use with this development. So there could be in the future if it's fully redeveloped property potentially.
Okay. That seems, seems a little subjective to me just in the sense that with other properties, it seems that any type of request or planned unit development that causes a plating, we've talked about that park dedication fee. So I, I don't know. What seems subjective to me is, you know, what is considered significant improvement or significant use.
Yeah. I don't know if it's, well, it's tied to the development, the density of the development. So I think staff sees that there's not a big change in that density that's putting an additional stress on the park system.
Okay. Real good.
Commissioner Awad.
Was it maybe paid when the building was first developed, you know, as part of the building permit rather than part of the plant? I mean, that's a possibility or, or at least that's when they got credit for it.
Typically not unless it's platted, but...
The plat is what gives the city the opportunity to collect park dedication fees. This property was not platted at the time of the development of the site and we, based on the case files that we have from that time, we don't have an official reason why. We do know that the city for a period of time was not requiring the plat along with land use applications and that, that has been part of city code that we do and that is something that staff currently does require and follow.
It's a better staff now, is that what you're saying?
Policies change over time.
Right. That's fair. Any other questions for city staff before we move into the public hearing? Or where applicants are here, if you'd like to speak at all, you're more than welcome to come to lectern and speak before we open it up?
I think you have questions.
I can't blame you, that's fine. With that, it is 6:44. I'm going to open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing here and if you have any questions, if you're visiting on Zoom, you can just let the moderator know that you'd like to speak to this issue. Otherwise, you can call the phone number that I listed earlier, the 651-372-8299. And the meeting ID is 923-7264-9368. I don't foresee this as a controversial subject. It looks like nobody's on Zoom, so... Oh, I'm sorry, there is one on Zoom. And that one person on Zoom, would they like to speak to this issue? They can just unmute themselves and speak with the moderator? Or maybe it was supposed to be none on Zoom? No one on Zoom? It says one on Zoom, so I'm assuming that's no one on Zoom. So we will close the public hearing at 6:45. So I'm going to turn it back to the commissioners. Any other follow-up questions, comments, concerns, recommendations? Commissioner Timmerman?
The follow-up that I have is that, you know, part of the plating and the park dedication fee that's associated with that, you know, it creates an even playing field for the various businesses in our community. And to me, it seems that because of the subjective nature of whether or not this is a significant improvement to the property, creates some challenges in my mind. So for me, in the fairness of the neighboring businesses and those who have paid the park dedication fee, I'm going to vote no on this particular item. I think that should be considered in this project because it hadn't been considered initially because of policy, because of prior ordinance. But in this case, I think it's the opportunity to make sure that all properties are being treated fairly.
Chair, sorry to interrupt. The person on Zoom said she asked a question in chat.
She says she doesn't want to speak, but okay. Do you have that question?
I don't.
I can open up the public hearing again at 6:47. Oh, here we go. Modern Technology, yeah, that's best right here. We're getting the chat in front of us. It states, "Will there be a proposal increase in traffic, or proposed increase in traffic? The intersection of DJSO, Southcross and Burnsville Parkway is already busy and difficult for homeowners to pull out onto Burnsville Parkway." Thank you. Well, I appreciate the question. City staff or city engineer?
This, this development did not require a traffic study, so we did not deem that it had a significant increase in traffic that would impact the area.
Okay. Hopefully that answers the question and I will reclose the public hearing at 6:48 unless there's a follow-up. Maybe wait to close it. Does that person have a follow-up question on that? Okay, sounds like no follow-up. So I will close the public hearing at 6:48. Thank you for joining us on Zoom tonight. With that, I'm going to hand it back over to commissioners. Commissioner Awad.
I'll make, I'll make a recommendation. I recommend, or I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning from I3 to I3 PUD concept and development stage planned unit development and preliminary and final plat of Southcross Commons, subject to the five conditions that were listed.
Thank you, Commissioner Awad. Commissioner Awad made a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradock?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Please say nay.
Nay.
And it is three to one on that. And that will move to the city council meeting tomorrow?
February 8th.
February 8th, thank you, at 5:30 PM in the chambers here at City Hall. With that, we will move on to the next piece on our agenda and that is adopting our 2022 Planning Commission work plan. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So tonight, the final step in the adoption of the 2022 Planning Commission work plan is a recommendation for approval of the work plan. The next step after this would be for the Planning Commission chair to present this at the February 8th city council meeting. The work plan has not changed since the last time that it was discussed at the Planning Commission. As you may remember, there are no kind of additional study items for both the 2021 work plan last year and the 2022 going forward due to the time commitment to the city code update. So staff put the work plan up on the screen for you to review if you'd like to check back in on it, but we are just asking that the Planning Commission make a recommendation for that February 8th city council meeting.
Thank you. And any questions for city staff? Seeing none, I'd be open to a motion. Commissioner Bradock?
I motion that we recommend the city council to approve the 2022 work plan for the Planning Commission.
Sounds great. Commissioner Awad?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Awad. The motion made by Commissioner Bradock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? And that is a perfect unanimous vote. Good deal. Well, let's move into our fifth item on the agenda and that is our Center Village Quarterly Check-In. I'm looking forward to big things here. Ms. Regina Dean, the Assistant Economic Development Coordinator, right?
Yeah.
Something like that. You're somebody.
It's always changing, it seems like.
Yeah, developing something.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. The purpose of this agenda item is to have a quarterly check-in opportunity with the commission to keep you up to speed on what's going around in the Center Village vision. It's a really big, exciting area for the city and a lot is happening kind of behind the scenes that I think a lot of our public, probably viewing audience is not aware of, but we want to make sure that you're up to speed so when you're talking with your friends and neighbors, that you have a good, good foundation and can explain what's going on and, and you know, certainly send them our way too. If you hear questions within your, your circles, your networks, we'd love to keep them informed of what we're doing at least from a city standpoint. And some of you may have been part of this process, maybe not. I think Commissioner John and maybe Commissioner Timmerman were part of the development of the Center Village vision. Couple of our commission members are newer and were maybe part of the, the process as a member of a board or commission, maybe as the public perhaps, but we want to make sure that you're, you're all engaged and up to speed. So for those that don't know, the Center Village vision actually started with our 2040 comprehensive plan update and prior to that, and prior to me arriving at, at the city of Burnsville, there was a lot of discussion that talked about the Burnsville Center and the Burnsville, the decline in retail just overall and, and what's going to happen. And we knew that the orange line was coming and that there could possibly be a stop somewhere around the Burnsville Center in the future. So that actually elevated to be a focus area within our 2040 comprehensive plan. So when we're looking at the 2030 comp plan update, we have required elements that we have to have per state statute and per the Metropolitan Council and then some kind of additional areas where we can include like items like sustainability or in this case, economic development and redevelopment and that's something that we took a focus on within this 2040 comprehensive plan update. So again, focus areas included the Burnsville Center retail area. We also highlighted heart of the city, our Minnesota River quadrant and what we at the time coined as our aging industrial area, our I1 zones within, within the city and then of course the orange line as well. But keep in mind that, that Burnsville Center was a real focus area in the update and where we spent a lot of attention and time talking about what this could be. And what came out of the comprehensive plan was for us to consider changing what used to be all business land use guided area within the city and the idea that we should change this to mixed use to accommodate for housing, housing choices for people, things like just a mix of uses that would not typically be allowed in a kind of a retail area. So we, as you can see on the screen, there's a lot of red. Eventually that changed over to pink or mixed use. Another thing that was discussed was the future of the orange line and then also just a high level observation of what was going on around different regional malls within the area. And there was a recommendation or implementation strategy that said, you should study this further. Gosh, I kind of got ahead of myself there. With the development of the comp plan, I, we did take into account just a lot of input from our different stakeholders, including the Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, the public, youth, seniors, school district, chamber of commerce. A lot of people were welcome and provided input on, on the final, the final plan itself. And again, just more community engagement that was done and then it was finally adopted in July of 2019. But again, within the implementation strategies, we talked a lot about that, that focus on the retail area and taking it to the next step and that's where we came up with the idea to, to study this further and hired a consultant to work with us to develop the Center Village vision and really redevelopment guidance on, on the area. And again, because the mall was once seen as thriving, I think this was opening day, just a, you know, kind of packed house to an empty. And this is a few years ago when there were more stores, but you know, again, the decline, people were seeing the decline. Our policymakers were seeing the decline. The community was seeing decline and a lot of vacancies within, within the mall itself. So you know, we knew this wasn't just a Burnsville Center issue. Again, we talked about a kind of just a decline in retail, a shift to online shopping, a shift in, I think at the time, we had a number of big box stores that were empty within the Burnsville marketplace. Staples or Office Depot was gone. There were a couple other empty big box areas that were, were vacant and you know, what's going on? So we did identify the area generally south of McAndrews, east of County Road 5, north of Burnhaven and I'd say generally west of Nicollet, but really ultimately we even zeroed in further to the Burnsville Center and just north of the Burnsville Center. But this generally, the screen, the aerial photo identifies the, the larger area which we thought could be the, the focus area and then again zeroed in a little, a little more. Many of you know that the Burnsville Center is a complex, complicated property itself. This showed the ownership at time of adoption of the Center Village vision and creation of the Center Village vision. CBL at the time owned the mall itself and then the Dick's Sporting Goods and the parking field and, and some of the kind of out parcels. And then Seritage, former Sears, currently vacant, owns their piece as well as JCPenney and Macy's. Now we know CBL properties are now owned, Kohan Retail is the kind of the, the main company that, that oversees the, is the current owner. I think it's like Burnsville Center Real Estate LLC or something. And as you know, they've come in recently to subdivide further, but that was the current ownership at the time. As part of creation of the Center Village vision, we did look at precedent examples using Ridgedale, Southdale and Belmar, which is in Colorado, to see what are they doing for redevelopment. The consultant that we brought on board, Damon Farber, was the lead. They worked with Genzler and a couple of other sub consultants to help formulate this plan, of course, working with staff, policymakers and stakeholders, but we really wanted to look at, you know, what, what... But we really wanted to look at, you know, what are what are our neighbors doing? What are they doing nationwide? And a lot of cool things are happening around the country, and even in here, we're seeing either Southdale and Ridgedale, those parking lots are are being filled up with housing and entertainment type uses and really a refresh of the area. A little note, Ridgedale, the city of Minnetonka, actually did use Damon Farber as well in their in their plan. And I think it's North Town Mall is using Damon Farber as well. So they're starting to be known as like the mall people. We we didn't want to develop the plan in a vacuum, so we, when we were going through the development of this vision of the plan, we did engage with the property owners. We engaged with the Chamber of Commerce, with Experience Burnsville, with the county, with state, with with the public. Night to night, we were handing out information cards for people to provide input. We had a packed house one night. It was just an open house and got media coverage for that. And and there were different opportunities for people to provide input online. And and what we heard was people wanted to see a refresh of the area. They wanted a place with great restaurants, entertainment, and parks, and it to be a walkable destination. And that's what we heard. That's what we still hear today. Ultimately, you know, we took the information that we were hearing from all the different stakeholders, and the the vision shows different ways to incorporate these themes that people were were bringing up as as important to to them, important to the community, important to to our policymakers, and things like the need for more open space and parks in the area. It's a sea of parking, sea of asphalt right now, a pedestrian and bike network. Again, just a very unapproachable area, you know, not not desirable desirable right now for just enjoying the area. But just imagine if you were dependent on on the sidewalks and public transportation to get to and from, like how harsh of an environment that would be to walk around the area. So really important to create that network for for people that aren't that don't have the ability to to own or or drive a vehicle. And we did look at transit options and and parking structure options for future orange line area, and then as well as where could structured parking be? You know, if you're bringing more housing to the area, more entertainment to the area, filling up those parking spaces, you'll probably not only need transportation options, but then also parking structures as well. The plan or vision also shows ways for people to connect within the area. County Road Forty Two is a huge barrier. One of the things that was shown in the plan was an opportunity to tunnel under County Road Forty Two, or perhaps provide a bridge over Forty Two, think more tractions for going under. But we heard a lot of people are, the northern portion right now of County Road Forty Two is is pretty active. You've got Target and Barnes &amp; Noble and Total Wine and Chipotle, and all those uses that are, you know, they're not only jobs, but destinations for people. And it's important to have that connection between the two areas. And so creating an opportunity kind of midway in between, or kind of at a midpoint on the mall property, and then under Forty Two to connect north, was something that was was seen as a really important connection opportunity. Of course, with new roads, new sidewalks, bridges or tunnels, creation of these new streets, landscaping, parks, it does cost money. And the plan, what the plan does show is, and this is $2019, and of course, high-level estimates, but what it could cost to implement some of these these ideas that have come about from from the vision. So it gives us, we use it, I use it as a working document. You know, what are what is the city's vision? What are the expectations? So that when we're talking with people, this is adopted by the city. This is what people want to see. Okay, if we want to implement these different things, this is what it's going to cost to do. So it's good having kind of a ballpark and using this as a guide going forward. So the plan is adopted, and it's it's been a really cool tool to to have something in place. I had mentioned it, when you drive around, you probably don't see a lot. You probably don't see a lot of change. You may walk through the mall and you may see vacancies. You may see, you know, empty parking fields still, but there's a lot happening behind the scenes. And I feel it's just a matter of time before you see those cranes on the property and you see those vacancies in the mall, you know, start to fill up and those those leases, you know, starting to to pick up. And and I I just feel it's, I don't know, I feel optimistic about it. I feel like it's just it's just around the corner. So we have been tracking the implementation and the progress of of the activities that have happened since the adoption of the vision. And it's really cool to see all those kind of building blocks or everything kind of build off of one another. But we hosted a Back to the Eighties event. Actually, we didn't host it. We partnered with the people from this car club, the Fierros Car Club, and they hosted this Back to the Eighties event. And they were going to host it at the Burnsville Center. I think this is back in 2019. And we were just finalizing the Center Village vision, and and we actually wanted to host a food truck rally somewhere in the city, and they were talking about maybe doing it at ICE Center. And we came up with the idea of, well, we know there's going to be a lot of people at this car show. They just attract so many people. And let's bring the food truck rally there. Let's join the two events. So we did this kind of public-private partnership, and we were down at the mall with the the food truck rally combined with the Back to the Eighties event and showcasing this newly adopted Center Village vision. And we also used that as an opportunity for our U B Long Here branding. We were just gathering information about that. So it was a great opportunity for us to be out there and and have interaction with the public. But that was kind of our our first like kickoff into celebration of this this newly adopted vision. We've done land use and zoning changes. Some of the zoning changes are going to be underway for proposed mixed use. We've done the land use portion. Now we're going to do the zoning portion for north of County Road Forty Two. We tried a couple of years to have the area considered eligible, the Burnsville Center area eligible for tax increment financing. We were turned down a couple of times by the state, but our last go, we were successful, and the Burnsville Center property and the adjacent right-of-way to the north is considered eligible for tax increment, the use of tax increment financing. So that's just a great tool to have in our toolbox as we start to talk with developers and start talking about infrastructure. Dakota County has done some work in the area recently, one looking at the orange line extension opportunities. They've communicated that an orange line station won't be built there until development starts to happen. So it's still on the radar. It's still, I'm hopeful that it'll happen. It's just a matter of timing for that. And then Dakota County also did a multimodal study, multimodal study, which included this section of County Route Forty Two. We've applied for a number of grants. The traffic study that was done in the area was paid for through a a deed grant, Department of Employment and Economic Development grant, and also Dakota County redevelopment incentive grant paid for the a portion of the A U A R. Gosh, there's so many darn acronyms. Alternative Urban Area Wide Review. It helped pay for that. And then recent, most recently, the city was awarded, I think, $3.1 million for a grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for an exit on exit ramp onto the Burnsville Center property on the very east side, so direct access from 35W into the mall property itself. But it's really cool to see all of these plans kind of build upon each other, and it starts out at the comp plan, goes to the Center Village vision, and then all of these things are kind of falling into place where we're really, again, setting that groundwork and clearing some barriers for for the future. Again, we did the A U A R. Most recently, with the the new ownership wanting to subdivide their property, we're able to obtain Aldrich Road right-of-way. Aldrich Road was shown as a north-south connection into the mall property in the Center Village vision. We were able to show that was displayed in the traffic study and the vision to use as negotiation with the developer to obtain that right-of-way. So that was the huge, again, laying that groundwork is really important. And then we've just continued to engage with with businesses, existing businesses. We're trying to attract people to the area, developers, and continue with our business engagement. And anytime we have an opportunity to talk with the media, we welcome it. I think just having Burnsville Center and the Center Village and the city mentioned in a positive light is a is a win for us. So certainly an opportunity, rich environment, that that I'm excited to see progress. With that, this is for informational purposes. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. We do hope to to come back quarterly and give you updates. It's not going to be as robust as this, although maybe it will. Maybe just in a different way. But we want to make sure that you're engaged and you're keeping track of the progress that's done. Again, I know it must seem, and I hear it, you know, I get emails and phone calls from from our residents, and they're frustrated that they walked through the mall and it's not the mall that they remember. And, you know, there are businesses in there. There's businesses that are working really hard to to stay open, and and they they want business, and so please visit them. But we're doing all that we can to to try to bring more rooftops to the area, more more people to the area. And things are happening. It's just not so flashy and and out on site right now, but things are happening behind the scenes.
Any questions for Ms. Dean? Commissioner Watt?
Not really a question, but just thank you for a really cool presentation and 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 also sharing with us all that's kind of been happening, you know, in this really long vision. And I'm excited to see stuff come out of the ground. Hopefully, you know, hopefully that'll start happening soon now that we've done all the groundwork. So thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I agree. I think, you know, getting these updates are great. I think it's a great way to, you know, continue building the excitement about this particular area. I mean, I I know how long it took to get the heart of the city going and moving, and then we had an economic collapse, and in this case, we've had a pandemic. And so, I mean, there's always something, you know, to throw a wrench into the works. So thank you very much. I think that I'm just really excited to see what's to come. The question that I have is about the, I guess, the subdividing that we looked at a couple months ago and some of the lots that had kind of been drawn out, literally drawn out to potentially sell to potential new businesses. Do we have any traction on those? Because I think that what we need here is like the key log to be pulled out of the river so we can start getting the the excitement from other businesses to move into the area.
Yeah, we've had a lot of, I would say, conversations. We haven't had any active applications at this time. And that happens, you know, we'll talk with a number of developers on any given project, not just here, and 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 sometimes it takes some time to to finally them to, the person interested in the property, to secure a a deal or contract for purchase with the the property owner. And it might be a while before we see an application, but we've been answering a lot of questions.
That's good.
Just nothing active.
It will. I mean, it absolutely will, and I'm excited for that. So thank you for the update, and we'll look forward to seeing you in another quarter.
Yes.
And no doubt, it's the number one question people ask me when they find out work with the city at all. It's like, oh, what's going on with the city center? But I I think it's a, yeah, like I'll say what what the others said, it it's in good hands. I think it's going to, it's going to pop really soon. And it's been, it's been a while in coming, too. I mean, we've been looking at this for for a few years, and it'll be exciting when things start rolling. I think it's going to be an economic boom down there. Thank you so much for your for your going through the whole thing, and I'm sure people were interested. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is updates. Any updates, commissioners? I'm going to turn over to staff. Update staff.
Yes, so your next planning commission meeting is Monday, February 12th, and we believe we're planning to talk about some city code update. I might be wrong, but we'll see you at that meeting at regular time, you know, at 6:30 PM. But other than that, I actually do not have any updates for the commission.
Great.
All right.
With that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Braddock, that was really quick.
Yeah, I'll motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Braddock.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Timmerman. All in favor, say signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight. Have a great night.